Morning, everybody. I'll call the means order. We do have a quorum. Take a motion to approve the agenda in the minutes.
So moved.
I will second that motion. All favor I.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carry. Rich Brown, good morning.
Morning, how are you?
How you doing?
Good. Good, good, good. Um, couple of things. One, I guess one of my big things right now is budget. Jackie and I are working on an amendment and because of past projects and when the payments and stuff come out, I think we've talked about this before. But I went through the, went through an amendment process through the DOT website. That one's easier to track. And what happens is carrying projects over for payment, things like that. The biggest thing I have, and I don't know if you guys want to make this decision or wait for new board or whatever, but I guess the biggest question is, can we pave 105 West? And if so, will we borrow the money for it? Otherwise, we really can't do anything. Right now, when I put that project in to pay for it with all the other projects that are carried over, at the end of the year, my, my carryover balance will be a negative 2.6 million. We obviously can't have a negative carryover balance. So, um, I guess it's kind of a question. I, I still have time. I have final plans due December 22nd, which is okay. Um, there's still time to pull it out of the, pull it out of the letting if, if it's so needed to be pulled out. I guess I just want to know whether or not we should plan on borrowing money or, or how we're going to fund it, I guess. Should I go and assume that there'll be a, I mean, I can do a couple of different things because I, what I'll need to do is I'll need to show, uh, I'll need to show a receipt or a miscellaneous receipt of additional money coming in to pay for that project because it's local. And the reason it's local project is because the foreign market money is expanded out as far as they're going to let us take it because of our last paving project. So I can make things work. And I guess in the short, the short of it is we can probably amend the budget, say we're gonna, um, put, I don't know, I guess I'd like to have a little bit more than, than 2.6 million because I don't like having to go through winter without having any kind of a cushion if, if spring is bad. So let's just make the assumption that we add $3 million to the receipts at revenues of the secondary road department. And then that would put us at a $400,000 carryover balance by the, starting next year, which is still skinny. But I could do that. And if next year, the new board members don't want to do the project, as long as I know, before the letting, you know, obviously we wouldn't, we wouldn't pay, we wouldn't do the project. And then we also wouldn't have the, the, the revenue put in. So it would be, yeah, we budgeted for it, but it didn't happen. It would be, we, no one would be, be the wiser that it wouldn't, you know? It'd be in the budget. It's just that if, if the money didn't come in, we wouldn't do the project and that would be the end of it. But I just didn't know where we were at. I, I asked Jackie about the 105 trust fund. I think there was 1.6 million in there, I think. Um, so that would kind of help if we wanted to clear that out, but I know that, uh, I know that it's been kind of a nice safety net for a lot of other departments too. So I guess I'm looking for a direction. Do I continue, continue with this or do I put it on hold, you know? Even such, it's still going to take probably a couple of years for us to get the money so we can borrow ahead again, but.
What, what's the cost of, what do you think the cost is going to be of that project?
I've got, I think I estimated it at about, uh, 2.8 million. And that was a six inch concrete overlay with three foot wide shoulders, just like the other project we did from, I mean, we can probably, it might be too late to, to change the whole, the whole, um, the whole, um, what do you want to call it? Description of the project and change it to something different. We wouldn't have time to do that. So right now, if we were going to change the project, we just have to put it on hold and getting into another letting probably wouldn't work to put it in a, a late spring, summer letting, just based on contractors, workloads and whatnot. So, um, we could go ahead with it. I guess worst case scenario is we, we don't get the money. We push it off another year.
Yeah, worst case scenario, though, there won't be much left of that road in a year.
Well, that's the other thing. I mean, we could find, you know, we've been, we've been trying to maintain it best we can with the Dura patch here and we could stick a lot more money into it. Um, if that's the case, but I just don't know how long, much longer we can Band-Aid it together.
Right.
So, and I know it's, it's, I know it's a tough question to, to just ask you guys this close to the new, you know, the new budget session and, and new board members coming in. So I understand completely. I guess the one thing is, do we just, do we just, for, for Jackie's sake, do we, do we make the assumption and do it? And then if it doesn't work out, we don't, I mean, I'm not going to hold anybody to saying that you said I could do this, but.
Right, right. Wow.
I just want to have, because, because the timing of the letting and the plan turning is getting closer. Um, it'd be nice to have some sort of an idea of commitment. And I know we talked about it and indicated that, but.
Right. I can't speak for anybody else and I can't speak for the future board, but I mean, I'd be in a taxpayer in this part of the county. And the way that road's looking and the amount of traffic it gets, I think it's one that definitely needs to be done. How we're going to do it? That's the next question. I'm not against using TIF funds. I mean, but that's, that's not going to be my final decision, I guess. So that'll be up to AJ and whoever else is on the board at that time.
Yeah, I, I know it needs to be done too. I'm just a little leery on the money side of it. Um, but I guess if we're not committed to anything, then we could still, continue with the paperwork end of it, the planning of it. Um, and then when it comes time to do, or between now and then, the bid letting, we could see if financing's there. And if the funding's there, and if it's not there, it's not there. We pull a plug on it and we wait another year.
Well, and I'd have to make sure that we do it before we ever get to a bid letting, just because it's not fair to have somebody let it and then say we don't have the money and then pull it. So.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, we wouldn't even do a bid letting if we don't have the money. That, yeah, wouldn't want to do it at all.
Um, I guess maybe I'll just continue to work with Jackie on it and see. And, and I don't know what kind of timeline, if you're going to use TIF, what kind of timeline you need to have for.
When are those supposed to be online? When are we even able to do that?
What's that?
Where, where the turbine's supposed to be online out there? When is it going to start? And when are we?
Oh, yeah. Well, I didn't know if there was, if there was TIF money from the last ones that could be borrowed or not. I guess that's.
There, there probably is. I mean, you can go, I mean, that'd be up to, we need to talk, the board needs to talk that over with their bond people. But, you know, there could be potentially, I suppose, more money there.
I know that the wind tower people are running two crews right now. They're working 24/7 and, and so they're, they're putting up towers. Seems like the components are getting put up every, every 12 hours. They're getting one assembled, but. I just wanted to bring that up and, and just kind of get you going. I think I'll work with Jackie a little bit more on it. But, um, like I said, the worst case is, is that it doesn't happen.
Right.
We just wouldn't do the project and we just wait a little bit longer. In the meantime, I'll just progress as though we are as far as plan work goes. It's not, it's not a critical, it's not critical to pull it from the prod, from the, the letting. It's just, the funding's going to determine whether or not we do it. So.
Right.
And irregardless, we still have to do the plan with a DOT. We still have to do all that, whether we do it this year, five years. So.
Well, and, and the thing too is, is, yeah, we can, we can budget it for 2021 where we're at now. The odd thing is, is what if it, what if it, uh, you know, what if they don't start it until 2022 and then we don't, don't need the money in 2021? But we still need the money. It's still got to come in and we still got a plan for it. So.
Okay. I, I guess I would just proceed with the planning portion of it and we'll just kind of go.
And Jackie and I'll get together and figure something out too, as far as that goes, but.
Then we can let, we can let the new board decide before we go.
Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to kind of keep it on the forefront. I've got a little bit of time yet. Like I said, even if we don't do it, the plans will be done for the next time. So.
Um, one other thing that I have is, uh, you know, you guys passed that, that resolution for COVID and everything was last week, week before. And it doesn't technically apply to secondary roads, but I think what we're going to have to do is figure out how we're going to do secondary roads and this whole thing. It's, it's going to be, I'm running into it Mitcha County right now. We've had several guys out with it. And so far, we've been operating as though we're exempt from the, that, uh, that law, whatever it is. Um, and so I kind of want to head this one off with the pass. Right now I've got some CDC guidance for, um, critical, critical infrastructure workers and how we're supposed to take care of them. But all it says, it doesn't say anything about using sick time. And I think the, the critical thing here is, is how we use the sick time and, and whether that bank is there or not. And I know that you guys said we'll take it on a case by case basis, but I don't know how the sheriff's handling it either, but I think what I'm going to try to propose in Mitchell County is say, look, right now, we're still critical infrastructure that doesn't apply the, the, that, I don't remember what the heck the initials are on it. Uh, but that, uh, that extended leave, um,
families.
Yeah, that, there's an extended leave for sick time. That's that 80 hour sick time bank. And so I guess what I was going to think about trying to propose was, if you feel symptomatic, obviously everybody says if you're feeling symptoms, stay home, get tested. And what I was thinking was, um, if you're stay home and feel tested or get tested, I think those, the days where you feel symptomatic up until the day you test, that'll be out of your sick bank. Um, if the test becomes positive, then we'll use that 80 hour sick bank if you've got symptoms. Um, if you're, if you, if you don't have symptoms, then we'll see if we can get you to continue to work while you're asymptomatic, but keep your distance. Kind of run the, run the, uh, the, the practices that the CDC has for us. Um, if you're exposed, kind of a similar thing where up from the day you find out you're exposed until you get a test, that's out of your sick bank. And once the test becomes negative, positive, then we'll go from there. But I think the, if you test positive and are symptomatic, then we'll provide that sick bank. If not, then we'll just continue on with your, I did, I think it's just kind of one way to kind of, kind of bring the reins in on it. And not everybody say, well, I feel sick today. I'm going to take my, some of my 80 hours, but then nobody gets tested. Nobody knows for sure whether they are sick or not. Um, any thoughts on that? I see that, uh, need to get Renee involved in FCC RA and proof of test. Yep. Um, I've talked to Renee about this in Mitchell County a little bit. So if that answers a little bit of questions, it's just, it's up to the board, what they want to do with the employees of secondary roads. I'm not an elected official, so. Sorry to bring that on you, but I'm just going to ask you for guidance. I can set, I can certainly help, but.
Well.
I just wonder if that's a good, I, I think it, it might be a good way to plan it out and I can continue to, uh, to massage this so it makes a little bit more sense. But right now it just seems like that might be something we can tell, tell the guys. I know I've got one individual that's been exposed already and kind of monitoring.
Well, we want them to be smart about this. We don't, you know, but like I said, I guess if they, they do take their sick time and it doesn't come back as COVID. I mean, it's, there's so many overlapping symptoms, it's tough to tell, but.
Right.
Then it goes back to their own sick time. I mean, and, and we, like I say, we want, we don't want to make them not stay home either if they got those symptoms, but.
Right, right.
You're going to have to weigh those factors out and be smart about this.
Right.
The thing about it is we do have to go bait case by case though, Rich. I mean, you're trying to write a policy on something where our people can wear masks if they're non-symptomatic, there's low symptoms. If they've been exposed, then it depends what is the exposure. Exposure can be a different type of exposure and you monitor it.
Right.
Try and come down with one policy, I'd be really careful. And I also have talked to Renee on this. Um, just on Thursday, I talked to her on several issues. So.
Just a, just a FYI too, what I just heard from a pretty good medical people says, you know, even with mask on, if you're exposed for more than a half hour to somebody, you're, you're pretty well exposed. So, um, keep that in mind.
Were you outside? Have you been within six feet? Have you, I mean, a bunch of factors to write one policy on this. It's going to be tough.
Well, and I, I understand that too. It's just one of those deals where, yeah, you take it on a case by case basis. If the person's been exposed to somebody that tests positive or you're living with somebody that's got it, here's the precautions we take. If you, you know, obviously it's, 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 yeah, on a case by case basis, but just trying to figure out some guidance for me and say, well, I don't have any direction. I guess, Dan, I don't know what you're, what you're doing for your staff, but.
And there again, I talked to Jessica a lot on this stuff. Um, if my people are like, we had one where the wife came home positive. He continued work. Anytime he was around any other employee, he had a mask on, uh, or anybody. And if he was around anybody, he wore a mask. Never had any symptoms. He did go get tested, tested negative. But we wore a mask until the end of that 10 to 14 day process.
And that's that CDC guideline I was talking about. If you are a critical infrastructure worker, first of all, you find out whether you have it or not. If you, even if you do test positive, but you're not symptomatic, you can continue to work as long as you take the precautions, wear the mask, keep away from everybody, sanitize everything. And that's kind of what I wanted to kind of follow is that type of procedure where we still have our employees as long as they're feeling good and taking precautions that if in case, in, in fact, we have to plow snow, I mean, most of the time they're isolated in a plow truck anyway. So it wouldn't be a big deal other than getting in and out and, and loading the truck with salt and sand, if that's the case or whatever, you know, making sure that the loader isn't being, you know, maybe kind of have some wipes down to wipe down the loader if they're using it, or maybe just have one person loading the trucks versus that person getting in and out. Whether that's possible or not, that all depends. But yeah, I, I know what you're saying, Dan, take it on a case by case basis. And that's where this, this, this implementing safety practices for critical infrastructure workers. This is a document from the CDC that, that would be nice to follow. It was updated on September 11th of 2020. So something that I think Jackie sent out here a while back, but it's, it's like you said, it's, there's ifs and whats and, and whatnot. But I mean, if they're completely feeling sick, then I guess I wouldn't want them at work.
That's, you know, I called Jessica anytime I have any question on it. We talked through it, either her or Shanna. And with me, you know, the thing about it is even if they go get that test, if they're still in that 10 day inoculation period, it could happen. They could get a good test and still eight days later come back positive.
Right.
Got to put those type of rules and those precautions into there. And to do it, here's a blanket chip for us. You can't really do it.
No, I know. And that's difficult, but I just was trying to follow this guideline a little bit. And that, that really, the guideline is really kind of a nice thing. It's just how do we, you know? And then on top of that, you've got.
Conversations with Jessica. That's what I knew.
All right. Well, and then on top of that, you've got daycare and everything else to deal with. But as far as I'm talking about just our individual employees right now that are coming down with it or, or been exposed. So. Just kind of wanted to throw that out.
I guess the, I think if you know somebody's got exposure, somebody's living in that household, that's, it's, it's a hundred percent known exposure. It doesn't mean they're going to get test positive, but you better keep them out of everything. I mean, I, I know you need them and as long as they're not sick to where they can't work, don't even let them in the shops or, I mean, keep them away.
Yep. And that's one, I've got one individual now whose spouse is positive and, and this individual's hasn't been tested yet, but you know, they're living with this person. So it's just kind of, they wanted me to tell them what to do. I said, well, and this was Friday, I found out. So stayed home Friday and just kind of, um, you know, trying to figure out, you know, what we should do next. And this person can take care of a lot of things by not being in the shop too. So.
Yes. Yeah. To me, I mean, right now we're fortunate. We don't have snow. There could be some coming later in the week. Um, you know, so we still need these guys, but we've got to make sure, try to keep them separated as we can because if we don't.
Yeah, I think they've been doing a good job taking temperatures and, and wearing masks, masks that I can tell anyway, when I've stopped in. So. I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of where I was headed with my mind. And I understand, I, I know exactly what Dan's saying too. You know, depending on the individual, how they were exposed, whether they're feeling symptomatic or not. I, I know that all plays a part in it. But this, this, the safety practices for critical infrastructure workers might be something that is a good guide to follow for us anyway. So I'm going to try to follow that best I can.
Sounds good to me. I guess keep them safe, keep them away from each other.
Yep. I think that might be all I have right now unless my mind is escaping me. But if you've got any questions for me.
I don't. Mark, do you have any?
Oh, I think I'm good.
I'll stick around.
Alright, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, drainage. Did you see those drainage claims come through, Mark?
Yep.
Um.
The stamp warrants and stuff? Is that what you're talking about?
No, I'm with the claims, not the stamp warrants yet.
Okay. Yep, I got them. I had both of them. So.
We'll make, uh, Rocking Brothers and then the treasurer. So.
Take the motion to approve the drainage claims.
Motion to approve the claims. I'll second that motion. Any other discussion? All favor I?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Alright, motion carry. And then, uh, stamp warrant claims. Yeah, there's a lot of Beaver work, it looks like in, uh, D2 main.
Yep.
Okay.
Sure if they got that all done yet or not, but I know they've been working on that. So I will make a motion to prove, approve the stamp claims.
There's a motion. I will second that motion. Any other discussion? All favor I?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carry. Okay. Uh, we don't have any regular claims. I think those will be next week. Uh, I didn't see any reports this week. Um, no payroll or eligibility, eligibility verification or salary changes. I think we'll see one of them next week, maybe.
We not have any payroll for our part timers. I sent stuff back to Russ here last week.
Right. Which should be.
I did not see anything. I'm real up. In case I messed up in here. So. I can check with, uh, Chelsea.
I mean, I can email Jackie right now.
Uh, Shelley just put a chat out there. We don't need those for seasonal guys. So.
Okay.
Must be good.
Sounds good.
Um, no liquor licenses. Jackie, discussion on special election for supervisor vacancy.
Can you hear me?
We got you.
Oh, good. My speakers didn't work, so I was hoping at least this did. Um, basically, as you all know, there is a vacancy that was left by Kenny on October 5th. And we are going to be having a special election. And, um, basically, let's see. Wanted to get the right wording for it. Basically, what, um, what we need from you guys is just stating that there's a vacant seat. And I would like to conduct the, um, conduct a special election. And that is going to happen on January 19th. And Chelsea has been working on all the special dates for that. You guys have any questions on that?
No, I'm assuming that works out with whatever timing, calendar, whatever we need, right?
Um, yeah, we'll make it work. It's just budget time and valuations and everything else, but you know.
Piece of cake for you.
Yeah.
I guess the sooner the better. Get somebody in here and, and fill the spot. Let's throw them right to the wolves with budget.
That's right.
That's how we got it. So.
That's right.
No, that works. Um, so we just need to put out a.
Kind of just move to have a special election. I'll, I'll make it sound better, but have a special election to, um, um, fill the vacancy.
I will make that motion.
Alright, there's a motion out there to, um, a special election to fill supervisor vacancy. That election will be January 19th.
Thank you very much, guys.
Second that motion. Uh, any other discussion? Do roll calls maybe?
Aye.
So, aye. That motion will carry. Our special election will be advertised and set up. Thank you, Jackie.
Yep.
Uh, we got a few minutes before we'll do the public hearing and we'll talk with Ryan after that. Uh, the road vacation, we're still waiting on that. Uh, when we're back, Melissa, you have anything?
Yes. Uh, we have a revolving loan fund application out and I am meeting with one other person on Wednesday for another application. So that'll be exciting. And then, um, I think it's what it.
I'll come through. I just kind of glanced at it. I'll read through it good here when we're done and, uh, I'll email you my response on it.
Sounds good. And then we have a, uh, when we're back, go exec board meeting next Monday. Okay. I'm wondering if you wanted to do it zoom or in person?
Um, probably better zoom it.
Okay.
That's, that's my thought. Mark, you think the same thing?
I would, I would say yes. I guess that's, that's the best way to do it.
I'll, uh, ask when I go come in tomorrow.
Yep. Anything you want to do, but I'm sure Mark and I will probably just zoom in on it.
Okay. Sounds good.
Alright, thanks, Melissa.
You bet.
Um, I don't see Jason Petersburg down here. Don't know. Um, I did talk with Jason a little bit last week. Um, he's working on the lights yet. Uh, Black Hills Energy did get all their seating and everything done, fixed everything with the mess they made. That looks really good, I guess.
It does. I've been by there.
And then, um, yeah, I think he's going to go to contractors, get some pricing on the, or we're waiting to hear back from contractors on the pricing to do that. Uh, they got the design, everything done for the, the streetlights. So. And then, uh, there was an email that came through on, uh, our deed and they were hoping end of last week, but we didn't see anything. So maybe this week we'll have that thing, I hope.
Hope so.
So I'm crossing my fingers so we can get this taken care of. So. Um, planning and zoning appointment. Uh, Mark, I spoke with Matt, which I've told you over the last couple of weeks. Um, and he had decided he would take that position. Um, basically, we just need to decide what and how we're going to pay him.
Okay.
And then, um, we can appoint him to that position. Um, I had discussed with them a little bit on pay. I guess Jane was kind of doing it hourly and she probably wasn't turning all the hours she needed to. Um, I know back when Jim Rice was doing it, it was up the neighborhood of like 9,000. But I, I guess I, what I had kind of run by Matt was we would pay him, um, $5,000 a year. Uh, for that position. Basically, we'd set him up with the email. He'd answer all that stuff, take care of any, all the work needed. Um, and, and we would run, we had to figure out an hourly rate. He'll keep track of his hours. And if he hits that $5,000 threshold because of a busy year, then we'll pay him hourly after that.
Right.
But I keep track of this time.
You know, remember what was set up budgeting wise? I mean, that might have to be changed. I know that planning is only your own budget. I'm, I'm pretty sure. So.
Right. I guess I don't know.
We can work it out.
And being this the end of the year, well, I guess no, it's not.
It's only halfway. I kind of, I kind of kept it the same way that, um, it was before. I'll have to look at it, but I, I kind of kept it in the same ballpark as when Jim was here. But I'll look at it again to make sure, because we're going to do in a budget, a budget amendment pretty soon anyway.
Just seemed like me, it was pretty small budget. But I don't remember being that big, Jackie, but I could be wrong. And I don't have my stuff here. It's all on the desk. So.
Yeah, I'll look again.
Okay. Just, I mean, something you want, well, you guys are, have to deal with that for the first year for sure. So.
Yep.
Just keep it in mind. I agree though, that would be pretty fair somewhere near and then as needed.
Yep, I mean, so as needed, it's, you gotta have something for an on-call availability basis, and...
Now, AJ?
What, yeah?
Um, have you guys, um, touched base with Jeff Gorbel yet? Cause I'm guessing there probably should be some kinda transition between the two, because he's been working on stuff also.
Right.
And there is that, you know, Joel set up that kinda generic email, so that could be passed on to Matt, but Jeff might need to be in it for a little while.
Yeah, and I, when I talk with.
This is Jeff, I'm, I'm online.
Oh, hey.
Hey, Jeff.
Hi. I thought I'd dial in for the urban renewal discussion, so.
Oh, sure, sure. No, Jeff, I, I think this, this is what we're gonna do, and once we, uh, get this final approved, um, we'll have to meet up with you and Matt and myself, probably. Uh, just go through whatever you've been working on, give him our, our ordinance books and that stuff, so he can start going through them.
Yep.
So I would suspect maybe in the next couple of weeks, if not, you know, we, we, it shouldn't take much to do that, just have a discussion and transfer a few things, so.
Right.
But, um...
Yeah, and this is Matt who?
Matt Dubay, he is, uh, zoning administrator over in Winnebago County.
Okay, so that'll help.
Yeah, so he's already got a good background in it, and I'm assuming, you know, zoning for most part is, is usually kind of based off a cookie cutter, and everybody's customizing after that, so it should be, should be fairly close.
Yep, yep.
Or this is dope, so, he shouldn't have, shouldn't have too much of a problem learning what we do, and like I said, it's only a few townships, so.
Right.
But, yeah, I'll be in touch with you, Jeff, on when we, when we, uh, could get together and, and get that stuff straightened away, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, anyways, Mark, so basically, we just gotta figure an hourly rate, and he wasn't, couldn't a hundred percent remember, but he's either sixteen or eighteen dollars an hour he was getting paid from Winnebago County.
Okay.
So, I guess my thought would be the eighteen dollars an hour is what we'll figure it in, and he just keeps track of his time, it's that five thousand dollar threshold, and then they'll just turn in a, an hourly timesheet after that.
Okay. Should work.
So.
We might need to talk to Shelley about that a little bit more, because that sounds like it's gonna be tricky for payroll.
Yeah, we'll see, we'll get the best opinion out of her, I mean, just to make sure we get it right and easy. So maybe we'll have it for the agenda next week, uh, to actually take action on it.
Be good.
Let's just, let's just make sure we get it right, so we don't have to go back and change anything. That work, Jackie, you think?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Ready to recess?
Um, yeah, oh boy, it's nine oh five.
Oh.
Alright, I'm gonna recess the, uh, the regular board meeting, and I take a motion to open the, uh, public hearing for revitalization.
I'll make that motion.
Alright, there's a motion, I'll second the motion to open the public hearing for the revitalization plan. Um, roll calls, maybe?
Aye.
So, aye, alright, our public hearing is now open. Um...
Hey, Chris Diggins wasn't gonna be able to be here. He said that there's no motion that needs to be made, we can call him if there's questions from the public, so I guess we'll, we go from there.
This would just be, kind of a question and answer, yeah, there would be no motions yet until after the third one, so.
Basically, is, um...
And should we get him on anyway, maybe?
If we can.
Okay, his phone number?
Uh...
Is six four one. We need Kenny.
Yeah.
Write it down, go ahead.
Six four one, four two zero, twenty one, forty four.
Yeah, you got it.
Sure.
If I figure it out before I load. And we'll give him a call quick and, uh, just, just double check with him.
You look goo- good over there, Joel, are you going on the ballot?
Yo. This is Chris.
Chris.
Yep.
Hey, Chris, AJ Stone, Worth County.
What's that?
I said AJ Stone, Worth County, can you hear me alright?
Yeah, I got you.
Alright.
Pull him over here.
Okay.
I'm ready for you.
Well, we just, we've got our public hearing open, um, bas- basically, alls we need to do is go through, get any info from the public, and then, uh, schedule our second one, is that correct?
You don't even have to schedule a second one. Um, you would wait thirty days if anybody would request one, and then you would schedule it.
Okay.
But we've never seen that happen before, so. Well, you just take comment now and answer any questions. And then, close the hearing and you move on to the next thing.
Okay, that sounds good, we just wanted a little clarification on that, and that's what we'll do from now.
I'm totally sorry. I'm down there here in Southern Iowa, and I totally spaced it off, so.
That's alright.
So does it get approved in the thirty days then?
I thought we needed three.
Yeah, so, you're, you'll have your public hearing now, and then you'll wait thirty days to see if anybody would, would, would request a second hearing. If after thirty days, nobody does, then your next scheduled meeting is when you will approve the plan by resolution, and then you'll have the ordinance on that agenda as well, and that'll be your first reading.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay, alright, we got her now, I think, so.
Yeah, because you only have, you know, two, two supervisors right now, you can't waive the second and third, so you have to do it three times. So you'll do consecutive readings, you know, one right after the other three weeks, and then it'll be approved, and you'll be good to go.
Okay, perfect, thank you very much for the clarification, Chris.
Okay.
Alright.
Any public there, or any questions?
I, the public, it's open to the public, and I am inviting anyone to go ahead and speak out if they like. No, Chris. Nope, not hearing anything from anybody, so.
There you go.
Alright.
Jackie just kinda saying that nobody's requested anything from her, and you close the hearing, and you're good to go.
Alright, sounds good, we'll take it from there, Chris, thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Alright, bye.
Bye.
Uh, Jackie, have you gotten any requests anywhere?
Nope.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Alright, there's a motion to close the public hearing, I'll second that motion, the roll call votes, maybe?
Aye.
So, aye, that motion will carry, the public hearing is closed. I will reconvene our regular supervisor meeting. Um... Okay. That being done, we'll wait thirty days to see if we hear anything different on that, and go to the next step.
A little different than we thought.
Yes, definitely.
That'll work.
Um, alright, up next on is, uh, Ryan with Group Benefit Partners.
Yep, let me, uh, get my video going here. Hey, good morning, everybody.
Morning.
How you doing today? It's another Monday.
Good.
Everybody have a good weekend?
Yeah.
Yep, we're, we're pretty good, good weather anyways.
Very good, alright, um, Jackie, I assume you're on too, and, and can hear us?
Yep.
Okay, did you, this morning Jackie sent me over an illustration that she put together that, that outlined um, the difference in premium between the three plans you guys have today and option eleven E that we spoke about last Monday. Did you wanna share that, Jackie, to show them, or did you already maybe email that over?
Joel cut me off. It says disabled.
Oh, do you wanna share it? Hold on, I'll, I'll get you in there.
Well, well, I have, I also have an illustration that I can share with you guys, that's updated with your current counts. Um, if you'd want me to, I'm happy to do that.
Yours is probably prettier than mine.
Yeah, yours gets the, yours gets the job done, um, if, if someone can give me sharing rights, I'll...
Already done.
Oh, it is, okay. Um, let's share screen. Alright, does everybody see that now?
Zoom her up a little bit if you could, Ryan.
Yep.
Do, do the zoom on the zoom.
Yeah. Is that good?
Getting better.
That's as big as I can go on my big screen.
Okay, it'll work.
Alright, so, essentially, Jackie put together a spreadsheet very similar to this, where we have, on the left-hand side, plan nine, ten, and eleven. Uh, your enrolled contracts, those are the employee contracts, it's always changing, but that was a snapshot in time based on the last month's invoice. I think, Jackie, your numbers were slightly different, but they're still very close. Uh, we have the ISAC Plan eleven E, the rates, these are your current two-tier rates as of January first. The deductible is five thousand, the out-of-pocket is sixty three fifty. The employee plan that they have today is seven fifty, the out-of-pocket is fifteen hundred. So you can see the maximum liability for every single and family on Plan nine of forty eight fifty, ninety seven hundred, there's the total county risk of everybody on that plan hit their out-of-pocket max, every family times two hit their out-of-pocket max, a hundred and forty thousand. Plan nine does the same thing for thirty nine thousand. Or Plan ten, and then Plan eleven, where you have the bulk of your enrollment. It's the least amount of partial self-fund liability totaling a hundred and twenty-six. So if you come to the bottom, if we add the hundred percent utilization to show you worst case, uh, the county is gonna spend six hundred and forty thousand in premium, this is the, the base eleven E premium, plus three hundred and six thousand of partial self-funded claims, plus your admin fee, which is nine ninety-five. I'll pull up your current illustration. You're currently paying eight oh eight in fully insured premiums, so you can see if you hit a hundred percent utilization, the county loses a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. What I can tell you is, we manage about fifty of these, and the highest utilization I've ever seen is thirty percent. The norm for ISAC is between twenty and twenty-five. So I showed twenty, twenty-five, and thirty. Um, I think twenty-five percent is a good budgeting number, I think that's, we're, again, we're gonna use the fully insured premiums that you have today if you guys wanna do this. But I think you're actually gonna realize roughly seventy-six thousand in claims, which will be a net savings to the county of over eighty thousand annually. But again, that's not guaranteed, there's absolutely no pressure, I'm not trying to sell you guys anything, I just wanna show you what a lot of counties are doing. Um, as your, as your premiums go up, the savings becomes greater, because you guys are, the, the spread between your current plans and eleven E are, are going to increase. And you guys had an eight percent change on base rate, which is gonna amount to, do you remember last year, you guys had a seventeen and a half percent decrease? So anytime you start from a bigger number and go down, the decrease is gonna be larger, or smaller, excuse me, we're starting with a smaller number with an eight percent change in the base rate, which is actually gonna amount to over an eleven percent increase. So essentially, this year's renewal is gonna eat up half of the savings that you guys last, got last year. I can't actually publish them yet, because I, Brad at ISAC, we're still finalizing the letter that is gonna be mailed, but I will be able to have your renewal rates very soon. Uh, but the only decision you guys really need to make now is, is do you guys act to move forward with eleven E and then partial self-fund, or do you guys just keep your current three plans? I know you guys talked about cost share last week, that's certainly not a decision that needs to be made right now, and I wouldn't recommend that. I know you guys do it differently, where employees get the difference to then use it to an annuity, and I, I think a lot of employees like that option, and I do know other counties that do something in a similar fashion. But this is at least a good illustration that just shows you a hundred percent utilization, you can see that it's gonna cost you a hundred and fifty thousand more if you hit the average, which is, you know, between twenty and twenty-five percent, you're gonna save roughly eighty thousand a year, and that number's just gonna get bigger as your premiums go up.
So if, if we went that way, and we rolled, uh, obviously, the savings into a bank to cover our expenses, so the differences between the deductibles.
Yep.
How, how big of a bank are we allowed to build, so that we're covered?
Yeah, the state doesn't put any cap on that, um, certainly, we, you have a pretty limited risk, you only need to have enough in there to cover runout claims. So if we're gonna average seventy-six thousand or eighty thousand in claims, you really only need about a quarter's worth, so only twenty to twenty-five thousand in that reserve fund is really all you have to have. Um, and if you're, if the claims don't exceed, I'd have to know what your county budget is out of the general fund without secondary roads, but if, if, if the seventy-six thousand doesn't exceed two percent of that general fund budget, um, the state doesn't really require any reserve balance, although I'll certainly always recommend, and you're gonna, you're gonna grow, that reserve balance is going to grow.
Sure.
Yep.
How, how do counties normally start so that there's a balance to take from, from the beginning?
So I, we put in new partial self-funded plans for, I think, six to eight counties three years ago, and they all started just like you guys, they didn't have any reserve. Um, they just started to fund the difference in premium, and then they just paid the claims out of, out of those savings. Certainly, if something crazy happened where we had half of your employees that met their out-of-pocket max in January, where we didn't have enough savings built up, there, there could be some cash flow risk, and I, I've never seen it actually materialize, but I think it's worth certainly disclosing.
And I, I wanted to point out that this illustration is, um, does, um, takes into consideration the annuity money that everybody's getting right now, it doesn't pull that out. Am I saying that right, Ryan?
Yeah, you would just be funding the... Well, you have to pay the rate, so anything above and beyond the rate for the current, well, it was actually last year's renewal current plan, so you're giving the nine twenty-eight, is that correct, Jackie?
Correct.
Yeah, so anything above and beyond. Yep, so you're still gonna use, the seven hundred and fifty-six dollars still has to go into your reserve fund to account for the health insurance expenses. So the difference between the nine twenty-eight and seven fifty-six, or those other premiums, that's what would be left over for the annuity. Yep. We would just use the current Plan nine, ten, and eleven premiums.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
That it doesn't affect the annuity right now.
It, it wouldn't affect that difference, no, and then, when you get the increase for July, that annuity difference would just, would just go down if the county doesn't give an increase in the overall allowance. Similar to what it was before you had, had the tremendous decrease last year. Well, this year, five months ago.
This year. Yep, yep. Um, well, Mark, I've
Yeah.
Sent some emails out, and I've got, gotten some phone calls and some emails back, I'm assuming you probably have too.
Yep.
What's, what is your thinking?
Well, anytime there's a possible change, there's gonna be a little bit of a, you know, there's gonna be issues, and I think the biggest concern was people thought we were the two things going together, talking about maybe making employees compensate, or, you know, put some skin in the game, you know, those two things aren't used, they don't, they don't go together necessarily right now. I think, long-term, I think this is the way to go, I think it's, it's the proper way to do it, it's gonna save money in the long-term, but, you know, we got a little risk up front, but we should be able to do it, and it should help us long-term. I'm, I guess, I'm not gonna be there, I'm not gonna be on there, so I probably shouldn't say anything, but, uh, you know, I'm, as a taxpayer, looking at this and going, you know, this is a pretty good benefit for the employees of the county that I, I pay for, and... And uh, I kind of think we, we need to do, as a county, need to do the best we can for the employees, but yeah, best we can for the taxpayers too.
Right. I mean, at the end of the day, that we're, we're saving the county, you know, that seventy-five, eighty thousand, hundred thousand dollars a year. I wish we would have did it two years ago.
Yeah, we're not changing the insurance any. You know, they're still getting good insurance. They still got some of the best around. Um, you know, that's not changing. Just the way we're doing it.
I have one more, one more question, sorry. Um, okay, the, when we switch, if we switch to the five thousand dollar deductible, January one, is there a second card that they get that shows the third-party provider? Or how, when they go to the doctor, do they explain, yeah, we have a five thousand dollar deductible now, but it will be covered, I promise?
Yeah, we can certainly give you guys a memo. Uh, Oxy and our, the two TPA options, they don't give ID cards. Um, but we can certainly create a memo. It, Oxyant's a TPA for self-funded health plans across the state, so that first time someone has a deductible claim, there could be an issue, and we'll certainly provide you guys with a template that employees can have to take to the doctor after they, the providers get used to this. Um, they're going to know that insurance has to pay first, which will prompt the third-party to pay as well. Uh, but we, we can certainly give you guys a, essentially like a memo from the employer stating the insurance that's in place. And again, as I disclosed last week, there's going to be some issues as we do this. I want to be very transparent. But those issues are not going to amount in employees spending more than they are today. That I can tell you with a hundred percent confidence. Um, after we do, to AJ's point, had we done this two years ago, it'd be rolling really smoothly, and it will be rolling smoothly in two years. It, it just, it's an upfront change, and anytime you make a change, there's going to be some frustration, but we're here to help through that process.
Okay, me again. Um, can we go back to, um, we have really good rates on our plans right now. Is, let's say this doesn't work, is it, can we go back to those plans or are we out a lot then?
You can always go back. ISAC has no rules on, you can always increase the benefit, so those plans will always be there for you.
And, and it'd still be the same formulas, so we'd get the same kind of rates depending on our formula at the time?
It'll all be based off the base rate. What I, I guess, to your point Jackie, Nine, Ten, and Eleven have very little enrollment. So I won't say always, because I could see actually, there, there could be the day where ISAC has no enrollment for multiple years and they actually get rid of those plans. That could happen, because counties just are not purchasing that rich deductible anymore. Um, so I, I'm not going to guarantee it, but they, a lot of, a lot of counties still cost share off the old plans, Nine, Ten, and Eleven. And so I think ISAC will keep those plans in place um for the foreseeable future, but maybe not forever.
Okay, then what about paperwork?
Uh, everything can just roll over as is. So we can, and I did confirm with Walmart that members will keep their same ID card. So there'll be no ID card change. We'll roll this all over. We'll set you, we'll have to do some paperwork to get the third-party administrator involved um and get a census over to them, but everything will be ran on Employee Navigator. So how you do your enrollments today Jackie in your office, we capture and we process all of the enrollments for the third-party administrator. So there's really, there's not much additional work on your end, other than just getting it set up. Yeah, we handle all of your enrollments for you, so we just loop this benefit right in with Employee Navigator.
Will there be additional paperwork at the doctor's office?
Uh, it, it's up to each individual provider. Typically, no. Typically, you just say, I want my insurance to pay. I have a, I have a secondary payer. So once Walmart pays, that, that prompts the third-party to pay almost immediately, because that claim file is sent weekly to the third-party, and then the third-party will pay that next week. Um, so typically, no, there's not additional paperwork that's needed. That certainly doesn't, that's not a guarantee, but typically, again, we have five thousand five hundred members on the plan, and we typically field maybe a question a month between all of the counties that do this. It, there has not been a ton of issues, um, but there will be some questions as we put this in place. If that's what you guys want to do. You know, honestly, from the association, if you, the difference that you guys are saving is what ISAC is left as a profit really today, because you guys are a, a group that's profitable for the association. Um, so counties doing this, although it does drop the overall claims that they pay through their health plan, it, that additional savings is really almost going from ISAC back to the individual counties. So that's why I just want you to understand there's absolutely no pressure to do this. I just know it was important from the follow-up from the ISAC board meeting uh that Joel attended, that I wanted to show you guys this available option.
Well, like I've said before, it's, it's been discussed since day one when I got here, two years ago. Um, it's been discussed every year, and I mean.
Last year it was hard to do it when you guys got a seventeen and a half percent decrease.
Correct.
The easy button was just renew, but you are going to see an increase. Um, I, it just, it's, it's pretty telling to me when twenty-three of the twenty-six counties do it, that, that to me is, the proof is, is in the numbers.
Yep, exactly, exactly.
And I'm going to talk to one of the other remaining two on Wednesday. Would not surprise me at all if, if they elect to move forward with this concept too.
Mark, you have any more questions for Ryan or?
Uh, not that I can think of.
Like I said, I've been fielding a lot of questions and concerns, and I think the biggest concern was just that little bit of discussion we had about uh uh, you know, percentage at the single rate payers, um, which I assured them it was not going to be a decision made by this board. It'll be a decision if it's discussed by the new board. Um, so I, I want people to realize that. What we've been doing here is just basically what we should have done two years ago and saved our county some money. Um, you know, at the end of the day, that is this board's job, is to be fiscally responsible for the county's money. So this is a very good opportunity, I think. Um, so with that being said, I guess Ryan, appreciate your time.
Yeah, you bet.
And um, I guess we'll make that decision on which direction to go, and we'll be in touch with you when we get that figured out.
All right, sounds great. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thanks, thanks Jackie for all your help.
Um, well, Mark, what do you think? Want to wait on it one more week? Have any more input from anyone else? I'll be honest, I've been getting a little bit of flack on why you would be voting on this going out, but the way I see it is, it's something you should have voted on two years ago or last year. You're still doing it.
Something we've been working on for four years. You know, maybe it's been worked on longer than that. I know we've talked about it. Like I said, we just never had any direction from the previous firm. And so nothing ever happened. They, they never came back. They never came back with a proposal. This is the first time we've ever seen anything. And you're right, you know, I mean, it's something, you know, maybe I shouldn't be acting on it. It's not going to affect me as an employee either way. I'm not an employee. I was an elected official. And uh, but I am a taxpayer, and I take a look at this, and from that angle, and it's, you know, if it's going to save the county some money, and it's doesn't going to affect our budget, and, and we're, we're not taking anything away from the employees, I just think it's a good thing. I just think we need to move that direction, and we should have moved that direction, like you said, at least two years ago, maybe, maybe longer.
Would you guys do one thing for me?
Yep.
If I got you the list of counties that have switched to that, would you at least check with two or three of them and see how it went for them? And see if, if they're happy with the decision they made?
Yep.
Absolutely. Absolutely, so.
I'll get you that.
We'll just kind of let this discussion go for one more week. We'll do our, our job. We'll check on that stuff for everybody, just to see how it's going. I'm excited. I get it on the office side, the paperwork side, everybody, so I don't want to create a big headache for everyone. I want to save money all the way around, so.
Have you reached, reached out any other auditors, see if it's a big pain or hassle for them, I mean, doing the paperwork?
I have talked to one, or I've emailed one so far, and it is, it's something that every time the third-party provider needs money, they got to get it to them. And it, it would be simpler to not do it, but I, I just, I'll, I'll check with a couple more too.
Sure.
I, I have an email out to one of them.
Okay.
Yeah, email out the list, and uh, we'll get some from three, four different ones. I'm sure we can talk with some of them that we're on other boards with or committees with, so it'd be pretty, pretty simple for us to reach out to, so not a problem at all. Well, Mark, if nothing else, we'll move on, I guess. Um, any discussion on any other COVID nineteen policies with the department heads? You know, we kind of had a little bit of discussion earlier when Rich was on. It is going to be case by case. We all know that. Um, but is there anything else out there that would like to be discussed from department heads?
Um, I got two things. One is, Mark, just to let you know, I did hire another girl, Michaela Ottman. She'll be doing paperwork today. You'll probably see it next week.
Good.
The other thing, um, AJ and I, and I'm sure AJ will probably go into a little bit more, met with the city of Manly mayor on our budget or our contract coming up. I was asked to put some figures together. The figures I'm going to throw at the board for, you do what you want with them. If, for us to put a full-time deputy, one hundred hours every eighteen days, it'd be ninety thousand dollars. So if they want currently what we're doing now, which would be half of that, my recommendation would be forty-five thousand dollar contract. So that's what I would recommend to the board on the figures I've done. That's covering everything, uniform, gas, wear and tear on the vehicle, to their insurance and that individual, and, and the forty-five thousand would be current, what we do now with no patrol in town.
Okay.
Sounds good, Dan. If you could kind of throw that together in an email for, um, for us, I guess, and then I will put an email together, and I could send that to Manly's mayor, and then they can have that discussion at their meeting here at the middle of the month, twenty-first, I think it is, so.
Yep, I'll get that done to you.
Okay. Thank you. EMA Commission meeting this Thursday, six PM Zoom. Um, that'll be me, Mark, so I don't think you'll have to worry about that one.
Great.
Am I right?
Yep.
Okay, until we get the new board and new assignments after the special election, I'll take care of that. Uh, weekly report, Mark.
Uh, I just attended the drainage conference down there in Fort Dodge. There was uh, there was thirteen supervisors present, three other people. So we met the standards of no more than fifteen people in a room, but uh, it was a good little quick meeting. Um, just touching on some things, same thing that, you know, was brought up to our meeting, but we did change the bylaws so that going forward, if this stuff continues, we'll be able to Zoom, both at the annual conference and regular monthly board meetings, we allow, be allowed to do that. So um, we got that taken care of. Um, that was, that's all I had this week.
Okay. I uh, uh, met with Dan in Manly, uh, as you kind of touched on, we're just, we'll be working on that a little bit. And then um, uh, that was pretty much all I had this week. I did miss out on a phone conference with a couple of our counties in the area on COVID and homelessness. But I will get ahold of uh, Ski One Neil down in Servo County and, and find out what we can do on our end if we need to help for, if there's anything they would need from us, I guess, so. Um, other than that, what if that goes on the agenda for next week?
Yep.
And I believe that's it.
No other meetings coming up?
Not that we both have to be in on. Um, WHW, I know there's some discussion. I don't know if they're going to do one before the end of the year or not, but as soon as we hear Jackie, we'll let you know on that.
Um, and another thing, Dan and I discussed um swearing in, because we have to do it. We can't do it at our, our January fourth meeting. We have to do it by noon on January second, which is Saturday. So what we were recommending is um Wednesday, the thirtieth at eight thirty.
Wednesday, the thirtieth at eight thirty? Available there?
Yep.
All right, sounds good. Let's put that one on, and we'll uh, yeah, it's already on there, so we'll plan on doing that. Hey Jackie?
And I don't know if we need a meeting on Monday, the twenty-eighth or not. That's the one I usually try to
Yep.
skip for the year, so the twenty-first might be your last one, Mark.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, typically, that's, we, we try to avoid that one, or whatever you want to say. Anyway, give everybody a break. Um, I'm fine with that AJ, unless something really comes up.
I'm fine with that. If, if something does come up, if, if we can wait, like you can just do it on the thirtieth at that time, if that works out.
We probably could.
Yeah, if something does pop up where we have to get somebody paid or whatever, just, yeah, we can do that on the thirtieth as well, I think.
I'll have to double-check on claims too.
I, Chelsea says on what next week was claims.
Okay.
So.
Oh, that's the first, that's the first claim cycle of the month.
Okay. And the claims we did today, Jackie, is it okay? I mean, I could, I could run up and sign if I needed to. Otherwise, I'll probably wait. I will probably plan on coming in next Monday, as long as things are settled down again a little bit, and.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's, that's fine. Otherwise, if I do something here in the north, I'll run in and sign them, so it's done, but.
Yeah, we, I think we have leeway on that.
Okay, just to make sure it's no, no big deal either way, but that way, okay.
You're recorded, you're recorded that you approved.
Perfect, okay.
Hey Jackie?
Yeah.
Are we going to want Zoom for that thirtieth meeting then? It's all set up? Okay, you're just going to do an agenda, so I'll just run off of that then.
I mean, you don't just shut down and put it on public television so that everybody has to watch it?
There you go.
We'll be around right. Great, so. Perfect. All right, if nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
I'll second that motion. I'll be right.
Bye.
All right, media's adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, guys.
See you later.